Good evening, everyone. Good evening and welcome. This is Birmingham Board of Education General Meeting. It's our general meeting, which is the third Tuesday of every month. Due to the EAC and all the bond projects going on, we are meeting in the auditorium. It's so nice and roomy. If people still want to come on in and join us, we welcome them. Love having everybody here in the gallery, in the seats. And I am going to begin this meeting by having Joan take her call.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. Trustee Ajuney?
Present.
Trustee Hokumer?
Here.
Trustee Joseph?
Here.
Trustee Penny? Trustee Rass?
Here.
Trustee Whitman?
Present.
And Trustee Young?
Here.
Wonderful. So, this next section of our agenda is probably everyone's favorite. It is the part of the agenda where we do our recognition. This is talent. This is, these are gifts. These are people, staff from all over, teachers that just shine, excel, and we want to tell you how much we appreciate you. And so, our recognition is what we do. Dr. Roberson's all ready? So, let's roll.
Yes, we are ready. And...
Well, we... Can you hear me? So, tonight, in addition to recognitions, we also have recognition slash/ resolutions because we have some people we want to honor today. And our first is the Paraprofessional of the Year, who is Madeline Phillips, professional and also Union President.
Good evening, Superintendent Roberson, President Ajuney, Board Trustees, and esteemed Admin. I'm Robin O'Keefe, President of the Birmingham Association of Paraprofessionals, and I'm honored to be here this evening with the 2022 Lisa Co. Paraprofessional of the Year, Madeline Phillips. And I am going to apologize, I have a beautiful plaque that I left in my car. Lisa was a beloved parapro at Corton Elementary. And following her unexpected death in the summer of 2014, Corton Elementary School staff created the Lisa Co. Paraprofessional of the Year Award in her memory. Lisa was also a loyal and involved Union member, and over the eight years since her past Association of Paraprofessionals, through the ongoing support of our membership and the association's partnership with the district, has had the honor of memorializing Lisa by recognizing an exceptional paraprofessional who carries on her legacy of using kindness, positivity, and humor to help each child enjoy learning and reach their full potential as an independent and successful student. This year, we had 20 exceptional nominations for the Paraprofessional of the Year Award. And if you'll allow me, I'd like to mention each of them by name. Preston Allman from Derby Middle School ASD. Maddie Aluia from Harlan Elementary ASD. Ken Beatty from Pierce Elementary School LRC. Jamie Binder from Groves High School LRC. Diana Surio from Greenfield Elementary LRC. Jody Drobat from Groves High School LRC. Laura Frazier from Derby Middle School LRC. Wendy Gregory from Pierce Elementary School LRC. Kathy Kirschenbaum from Harlan Elementary LRC. Amy Loffler from Corton Elementary LRC. Christine Menzinger, Derby Middle School ASD. Andrea Myers, Birmingham Virtual Academy. Jody Oliphant, Greenfield Elementary LRC. Lynn Paugrom, Pierce Elementary LRC. Madeline Phillips, of course, from Seehome High School ASD. Julie Shimshock, West Maple LRC. Michelle Smith, Pierce Elementary LRC. Rhonda Thomas, Greenfield Elementary LRC. Jennifer Thompson, Birmingham Covington School LRC. And Kelly Thompson, Derby Middle School ASD. In these nominees, who are just a fraction of the nearly 170 fellow educators doing exceptional work each and every day to support the success of students who may face the greatest of challenges, we see the excellence of our profession embodied. On April 6, 19, National Paraprofessional Appreciation Day, we gathered to celebrate the nominees, and in addition to Madeline, recognized Jody Drobat as our outstanding high school nominee, Kristi Enser and Kelly Thompson as outstanding middle school nominees, and Wendy Gregory and Nettie Aluia as outstanding elementary school nominees. But tonight, it is my greatest honor and privilege to be with you to honor Madeline Phillips, the 2022 Lisa Co. Paraprofessional of the Year. Madeline has just completed... Okay. Madeline has just completed her 14th year of service in the district, currently serving in Seehom's ASD program. She has also spent many summers supporting students in the extended school year program. Her nomination was spearheaded by Seehom ASD teacher Victoria Barbieri, coworker Bridget Sherry, and along with parents Lisa Carlton, Wendy Earnzen, and Anna Leslie. Victoria describes Madeline as "the best paraprofessional" that I have worked with in 25 years of teaching, and who is someone who is fabulous at creating teachable moments in every setting in which she works. She goes on to say that Madeline is very intuitive to each and every student, their IEP goals, behaviors, bigger next behavior, mode of communication, emotional, social, and independence needs, and of course, their academics. Coworker Bridget Sherry adds that Madeline is "the consummate para" who is dedicated to her classroom students as well as her coworkers. Parents Lisa Carlton, Wendy Earnzen, and Leslie. And Madeline is "the team player" who listens and collaborates with outside professionals for their students' best interest. That her nourishing personality exudes her exceptional care to all her students. That Madeline has been instrumental in the transformation of their child's independence, emotional reasoning, and flexible thinking, all of which are difficult for children with autism. And that during COVID virtual learning, Madeline worked tirelessly on virtual lessons, and with her persistence and gentle nature, their child flourished. And that Madeline was instrumental in making the transition back to school after two years of being at home during the pandemic, an engaging and fruitful experience. Beyond her dedication to her students, Madeline is a dedicated coworker. She is always ready to help a colleague learn a new task or find the resources they need. She has been instrumental in improving the professional lives of the BPS paraprofessional community through devoting hours of service as a BAP trustee and on the bargaining team, where her calm, thoughtful, and collaborative presence has been a great asset. As a colleague respected by coworkers, students, and their families, Madeline is an exemplary and deserving recipient of the 2022 Lisa Co. Paraprofessional of the Year Award. Please join me in congratulating her. And her beautiful family, many of them are with her.
Madeline Phillips.
And before we take a photo, I have a resolution that I'm going to ask the Board of Education to consider, thereby be it resolved, that the Board of Education acknowledges Ms. Madeline Phillips' significant contribution to the students of the district and the school community, and congratulates her on being selected as the 2022 recipient of the Lisa Co. Paraprofessional of the Year Award.
Trustees, not only does Madeline Phillips rock, but I'm going to ask your consideration to move forward Resolution 98, the 2022 Lisa Co. Paraprofessional of the Year Award recognition. Madeline Phillips. All those in favor passing this resolution? Oh, sorry, can I get a motion, please?
I move to approve Resolution Number 8, 98, naming Madeline Phillips the Paraprofessional of the Year.
Okay. Moved by Trustee Joseph, seconded by Trustee Rass, and now, trustees, I'd love to take a vote. All those in favor of moving Resolution 98 forward? Please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Of course, it was unanimous. Congratulations.
Our next two resolutions and recognition represent our BEA members, our BEA members, our Birmingham Education Association. And the first is Teacher of the Year. And I'm going to ask Amy Denise Wagner. I'm going to ask Amy Denise Wagner, who is a Greenfield teacher and also the BEA president, to come forward to talk about Shelley Potter as the BEA Teacher of the Year.
Okay, so, like Robin, I almost left something very important. Mine's money, though, Robin. And I understand somewhere up here there are some envelopes. Is it under maybe here or under here? Okay. So, we don't, you don't want to forget these. And there's one for Madeline, if I understand correctly, too.
So... Amy, can you move closer to your microphone so we can hear you?
Yeah, sorry. We were just fumbling through some forgotten items. So, I am here today to speak on behalf of the Birmingham Education Association. Again, I am Amy Wagner. I do happen to be a teacher at Greenfield, which two of the recipients of our awards this year did come from. I want you to know, though, I had no part in choosing them. Full disclosure, there's a committee that works together using a rubric that we developed years ago to decide who are recipients of our awards. I was not part of that committee. So although two of them are from Greenfield, and that is where I've spent my career at Birmingham, I promise you, I had nothing to do with these selections. On top of that, not only do I work at Greenfield, but I do have children in the district. And so, I'm kind of excited to speak about three people that are here this evening. I was not able to... Three of them are here, and I actually have firsthand experience as a parent with these teachers as well. So I kind of have that balance between, yes, they're my colleagues, but they also are teachers of my children. So with that, I have to admit also that I went to every school and coached one of these teachers already. So I did not prepare something as lovely as Robin just did. That's a hard act to follow. So, in full disclosure, too, I wasn't at this meeting last year to present the award. So if Robin happened to go before the BEA last year, I wasn't here to know that that's what a lovely job she did. So, I may not be quite as eloquent. However, I would like to call up first Shelley Potter. And Shelley has been in the district for over four 32 years, right?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, thirty-four years. That I did have written down, but I had the wrong number. So Shelley has been in the district a very long time. And I understand, I asked the other day for a bit more information than I had about how she started her career here. And she actually started between Midvale and, tell me, the second school, Beverly, as a, I'm not an instructional specialist, enrichment specialist, thank you. We don't have those anymore, so that's why that word was not coming to me. She started out as an enrichment specialist, and then she became a full-time classroom teacher at Midvale the following year. She has spent 17 years, most recently at Greenfield, as a reading specialist and an instructional specialist. So we've been so blessed to have her for all that time. And for a good portion of her career, she has been a Greenfield Gator. I, again, have had the opportunity to work with Shelley as both a colleague and as a parent of my son. We have something called Gator Families at Greenfield. And my son has been in Shelley's Gator Family really since its inception. She has these great pictures of her group from year to year where you can see the progression of the children. And it's just, it's great to be able to look across the years and see the students that she's had such an impact on, even in that small little group that she sees approximately once a month at Greenfield. So I thank her for that as a parent. Shelley has had such an integral part of programs at Greenfield. One of the ones in particular that I know she has shared with other buildings in the district is her League of Extraordinary Gentlemen and League of Lean Ladies. You've probably heard of this before. I think, I think it's even been spoken about at a board meeting before. I feel like there's, and maybe I'm saying that because I know it's been shared amongst other buildings. But this is a program where Shelley, single-handedly developed programming around essentially being a good citizen, a good person. And she works with the young children at Greenfield in 4th and 5th grade, teaching the manners and respect, and not only respect of others, but how to respect yourself, standing up for others, anti-bullying, and how to be an advocate. And she's spent countless hours preparing lessons and sessions that support those life, those characteristics, those traits that we'd want our children to have. And so that's one of the programs that Shelley's worked extremely hard at developing and continuing at Greenfield. She is part of our, has been a part of our test program, and that is a program that supports struggling students. Shelley has taught in that program. She has been a creator of something called the Vocabulary Parade, where children dress up as a vocabulary word. And she was, and not only are they learning great vocabulary, but it's like Halloween times two for all those educators out there. Halloween. So she's, she's been a great advocate of that as well. We've done that several times at Greenfield. She, one thing that came up multiple times in the documents about Shelley, and again, I don't know if I said, I don't think I said this at the beginning, but the, our award, similar to the Paraprofessional Award, is selected by colleagues. And so not only are these people that I'm going to speak about today beloved by students and families, but they're also really appreciated and admired by their colleagues. So, one of the things that came up in Shelley's letters that were written about her multiple times was what a cheerleader she is. She's like a perpetual leader, and that is so true. If anybody is going to make a sign when it's your birthday or send a card when you're not feeling well, it's going to be Shelley. She's going to remember. Remember to do that. And so, we are going to miss her because not only Shelley, the Teacher of the Year for the Birmingham Education Association, but she has chosen this year to retire as well. So she is going to move that new phase of her life. She will be sorely missed at Greenfield for all the things that she has provided to, again, us as her colleagues and certainly the students and families that she has touched. Not to mention the many years that she was in the district before Greenfield, that we, that we, of course, have many others that will, will miss you as well.
Lori and I talked together.
We did.
Yeah.
And you know, you forgot to mention she was also an author.
She is an author. Yes, she is.
How many books, Shelley? You sure?
Yes. Isn't one enough? I haven't even read a whole book in like six months.
I lost count of how many awards Shelley Potter has won. Just from her...
That, I don't have documentation on.
I lost count on number 17 or 22. No, 30. I'm just saying.
Again, it is my honor and privilege to acknowledge on behalf of colleagues and the Board of Education, your students, the parents, all the families that you have touched. Thank you for your service to Birmingham Public Schools, and thank you for being a great colleague.
Thank you. So for consideration, I'm asking the Board of Education, there be a resolve that the Board of Education acknowledges Mrs. Shelley Potter for her significant contributions to the teaching profession, and congratulates her on being selected by her peers as the 2022 Birmingham Education Association's Teacher of the Year.
Trustees, it is my pleasure to ask you to consider Resolution 99, Birmingham Education Association, which is our BEA, Teacher of the Year recognition to Shelley Potter. Can I get, please, a motion on the floor?
I move that we approve Resolution 99, the Birmingham Education Association Teacher of the Year recognition.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Hokumer, seconded by Trustee Young. Trustees, all those in favor of passing Resolution 99 to recognize Shelley Potter, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Shelley, you did it again. Congratulations. Offspring, you're more than welcome to come up and get a snap with your mouth.
All right. The next recognition, and don't go anywhere, is our BEA Randall Educator Excellence Award, which signifies the teacher, teachers who have won educator excellent awards at the elementary, middle school, and high school level. So I'm going to ask Amy Denise Wagner to come back up.
This award, the Education Association partnered with the Randall Agency, which is an insurance agency in Birmingham, who, they approached us several years ago to honor Mrs. Randall, actually, who was a former educator, is no longer a person. They approached us and asked if we wanted to partner with them to honor attending educators in our district. And so, of course, who wouldn't want to be able to acknowledge more amazing teachers? So we partnered with the Randall Agency, and they provide some of the funding that goes into our gifts that we give, those checks that I almost forgot. Well, I did forget and had to go back home. We partner with them, the Education Association and the Randall Agency, to be able to honor teachers and provide a small token of our appreciation, monetary token of appreciation. So I have three teachers that I'd like to call up here. One of them could not be here tonight. Kathy Malaka did receive the High School Teacher of the Year Award for the BEA Randall Agency Outstanding Educator. She could not be here. However, I know Sarah Tucker is here from Berkshire, and Olivia Serpina is here from New York.
That's my girl.
So again, I, you know, I'm going to talk about Kathy first, and it's not because I want to talk any less of... And it's not because I want to talk any less about her, however, because she's not here. But I do want to say that Kathy's colleagues, I felt like I knew Kathy before I ever read the letters about her. I had never actually, maybe I'd met her once, but I had never really been in the room with Kathy before until I went to present her award at Seehome. She's a Spanish and English teacher at Seehome. And I felt like I knew her though, because so many of her colleagues talk about her as such a respected teacher in that building, that I kind of felt like I already knew her before I even went there. Because I'd always like, well, Kathy Maleka does this. And Kathy Maleka, why don't we ask Kathy? And so even though I don't really know Kathy, or I didn't until I went to present her award to her, I felt like I did because her colleagues had such wonderful things to say about her. She is a leader in that building and she again is highly respected by those that she works with. And so although she couldn't be here tonight, I do want to recognize that Kathy was awarded the high school version of the award that these two ladies got at their levels as well. So, and I know she's in the resolution. So we will get to hear a little bit about, more about her. So standing with me tonight, I have Sarah Tucker from Berkshire. And Sarah, again, received the middle school version of the BEA Randall Agency Outstanding Educator Award. And when I went to talk about Sarah and I mentioned that my own children have had, Shelley's been a touchstone in their lives, Alethea has, and so has Sarah, because my older son had Sarah as a math teacher. So some of the things that were said about Sarah, because again, Alethea and Shelley I work with, so I know as a colleague. Sarah, just new as a parent. What can your colleagues say about her? She has high expectations and holds kids accountable for their work. Her students respect her, but they don't elect them. She gives all levels of learners the attention they deserve. Multiple letters spoke about the support that she gives to new teachers, how she's a role model to those who are new to the building. She takes their hand and helps them get acquainted with the culture of Berkshire. She, she helps with something called Weekly Fun Fridays there. She helps organize Charity Week. It helps if you wear your glasses, by the way. She, she organizes the National Junior Honor Society Ceremony. She's part of their Faculty Advisory Committee. She's been on the Math Curriculum Design Team, Math Leadership, Character Ed, and the list goes on, just like with Shelley, right? We could keep talking and talking about all the things these people have done in the district, for the district. She is an expert subject area, has a passion in math that is interesting. You tell everyone, Sarah, what you have your students say, I believe, on a daily basis? Math equals fun time. And when I was there, she did yell that at them. Again, Sarah is held in very high regard by her colleagues, just like with all of these awards. They're very, they're very special because again, when your peers respect you and admire you and look to you for advice and ask for your opinion, that's a true testament to your dedication to your craft. And so I know that Shelley, Kathy, Sarah, and Alethea, who, don't worry, I'm going to talk about it as well, all have these qualities. And that is why they're standing here today to be honored. Alethea, so congratulations for the middle school, Randall, BEA Randall Agency Academic Excellence Award. Elementary version of this award from the Randall Agency and the Education Association. And again, Alethea being at Greenfield for many years now. Alethea, you've been in the district more than twelve years, but I didn't have the exact number written down.
Twelve, twelve.
It's under the twelve here, okay. Somebody put twelve plus on one of their things. So I knew it was at least twelve. So Alethea's been in Birmingham for twelve years and she has spent a good portion of that at Greenfield. How many years have you been there?
Twelve, ten at Greenfield.
I was going to say it was ten or eleven. And as you know, sometimes our teachers have to go between more than one building. And so certainly that has occurred in Alethea's career as well. So not only is she held in high esteem by her Greenfield colleagues, but she is currently working, or was currently working this last year over at West Maple as well. And so some, one of the letters that was written came from West Maple Teachers. So Alethea has had an impact on students across the entire district in her years here. Again, I know Alethea as a colleague and I'm going to just kind of highlight some of the things that were said in some of her letters. Kate Alexander said that Mrs. Serpil's ability to tap the natural artist in every student is magical. And I think the magical stood out to me. I see Adrian nodding her head because her son also has Mrs. Serpil as a teacher. It is, and I am not exaggerating, and you can probably nod to this one too, the artwork that comes out of that room. Keep in mind, these are five-year-olds at the young end and like squirrely eleven-year-olds, ten, eleven-year-olds at the high end. The artwork that comes out of there, I want to buy and put on my wall. I pay these kids, some of these kids for the artwork. It's unbelievable what this educator gets kids to do and how she taps into their artistic ability. So when I saw the word magical in Kate's letter like that, that was something that just really stood out to me. She's a quiet champion for education. She doesn't ask for anything. She doesn't, although I just mentioned how magnificent the artwork is, you'd never know that, that that's her doing. She doesn't boast, she doesn't, she doesn't brag. It's just what she does. Alethea is, not only does, Alethea does not only work with K-5 general education students, but she also works with cognitively impaired students as well. So not only is she charged with your general ed students, but she also has hands on with our special needs students too. And again, patience, grace, Alethea has it all. So Alethea Serpil, you are the recipient of the BEA Randall Agency Outstanding Educator Award for Elementary. Although I do have notes from when I spoke about them the first time. It was a little more off the cuff this time. But I do want to say that with, again, this award, there is a little monetary gift from the Education Association and the Randall Agency. So ladies, here are your special envelopes. Alethea and Kathy. Now this resolution, you used to.
So, board president Asiluni, whereas for Resolution 100, these three outstanding teachers have been noted by their BPS colleagues as master teachers, who due to their enthusiasm for teaching, have inspired their students to carry with them a love and passion for learning. And therefore, be resolved that the Board of Education, in partnership with the BEA, acknowledges Mrs. Alethea Serpil, Mrs. Alethea Serpil, Ms. Sarah Tucker, and Ms. Kathy Maleka's significant contribution to the teaching profession, and congratulates them on being selected by their peers as the 2022 Mimi Randall Educator Excellent Award winners.
Trustees, it is my pleasure to ask of you to move forward Resolution 100 to Birmingham Education Association or BEA, the Randall Education Excellence Award recognition to the Serpial.
Alethea. Alethea Serpil.
Sarah Tucker and Kathy Maleka. Trustees, can I get a motion to move this resolution forward?
I move to move Resolution 100 forward, the BEA Randall Educator Excellence Award recognition.
A second.
Moved by trustee Rath, seconded by trustee Whitman. All those in favor of moving this very important award forward, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations. Note that seven, six, zero. You know, Kate, I just want to make one quick comment. These, these recognitions go so far beyond this room and what we're doing now. You, you have touched, all of you who have received these recognitions and these resolutions, your efforts, your gifts, your talents, they are with the students now that carried them forward. And so the recognition goes far beyond this, this meeting tonight. So thank you so much and congratulations again.
Our next recognition is for the Debate Coach of the Year. And here to introduce Ryan Neerman, we have John Lawson. John Lawson is a retired teacher from Groves, but he has been still, still working with all of our students on debate. And so I'm going to call him up to talk about Ryan Neerman, our Debate Coach of the Year.
Administrators, trustees, I'm John Lawson. I was Social Studies Department Head for 24 years at Groves High Groves and Assistant Groves and Assistant Forensic Coach. I'm currently Executive Director of the Detroit Urban Debate League in my retirement. But as Dr. Roberson indicated, I continue to coach debate and forensic students at Groves. Today, I'm here to introduce Ryan Neerman, the Michigan Debate Coach of the Year. Ryan graduated from Groves in 2007 and he was named Debate Coach of the Year for 2021, 2022 by the nonprofit Michigan Speech Coaches Incorporated, formerly the Michigan Speech Coaches Association, at their 2022 Spring Tournament and Conference on Mackinac Island on May 21st of this year. Ryan debated for Groves and during that period was novice state runner-up and junior varsity semifinalist. And then he debated for the University of Michigan. He earned a BA from the University of Michigan and his PhD in applied mathematics, Oakland University. He began coaching as an assistant coach as soon as he graduated from Groves. Then, a few years later, moved into the co-director of debate position. He has coached six varsity state debate champions, six junior varsity or second-year champions, and one novice championship, along with three novice runners-up. Groves has also reached the elimination rounds of some major national tournaments, winning the MSU Spartan Invitational twice in the last four years. And in 2021, the Northside Prep Windy City Invitational in Chicago, as well as the Wayne State Pappus Tournament in Midtown. Because of his technical and mathematical expertise, he was instrumental around 2013 in moving the Groves Debate Program from paper-based research and filing to completely allowing filing and competition. So we certainly saved a lot of trees. Ryan, and we don't get teachers angry by using the copying machine and getting blamed, currently serves as Chair of the Michigan Inter-scholastic Forensic Association Debate Committee and, as it stays on, a member of Michigan Inter-scholastic Forensic Association Executive, Inter-scholastic Forensic Association Executive Council. The Groves Falcon Invitational, which began in 1989, is now its second year of virtual debate. We've welcomed teams with Ryan's technical expertise from around the nation and the globe, states like New Jersey, Florida, Mississippi, California, Illinois, all over the country. And this year, teams from outside the United States, from British Columbia and Kazakhstan, attended the tournament even though they were debating at two or three in the morning when it began. We congratulate Ryan's wizard honor. And all this, this was presented in the past. This is the plaque that the Michigan Speech Coaches Association, Inc., awarded to Ryan as Coach of the Year for 2021, 2022 in debate. Thank you.
And before we take a picture, another fun. And before we take a picture, another fun fact is his is our beloved custodian at the EAC, Sue Neerman. She is in the audience. She's wonderful.
And one other fun fact is that his sister Shannon, who debated for four years at Groves and three years for MSU, is our Assistant Debate Coach.
Oh, gosh. Amazing, amazing. Congratulations.
And that concludes our recognitions for this evening.
Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, we are at a segment of our agenda where we can take a recess, which means, oh. Sorry, you know what we're going to do? We're going to run our mission statement because it's got a beautiful recognition of our, our recipients this evening. So go ahead, Ellen.
By encouraging educational excellence, we challenge and inspire all learners to positively impact their world.
Part two of the five-minute recess. It is now time for those of you that have other places to go, to celebrate ice cream to be eaten. This is your opportunity to slip away and enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you so much, all of you for coming. Thank you. So Sarah, Sarah was a student teacher. I think she was. I think she was... Yes, time's... So, our recess is now over. We're going to reconvene. Move on with the next part of our agenda, and that's additions and deletions. Trustees, do we have any for this evening? Addition? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the next. And this is our superintendent's report. Dr. Roberson, do you want to stay right where you are?
Yes.
Okay.
So, thank you, trustees. So tonight, we're kind of getting to the point where we're going to turn the page on our budget. You'll see, again, just as you did in the study session, that we will be asking for approval of the '21-'22 amended budget. In February, if you recall, we talked about filling in our holes with federal money and going into fund equity for about $3.5 million. With a little less spending tonight, you will see that that number looks closer to $2.9 million as opposed to $3.5. Additionally, for the '22-'23 school year, we have the projected budget. We did use some conservative assumptions with that projected budget with per pupil funding increase at $300 and a loss of 145 students, just based on our previous data. And with that, and with staffing adjustments and other adjustments with our budget, we are looking at asking for utilization on fund equity at $3.4 million, which, as Dr. Gistinger shared last at our last study session, will leave our fund balance at around 11%, a little over 11%. So just kind of giving that as a preview. The other thing that I just want to share, which, over the last two days, we had a Leadership Institute. And we had it off-site at Oakland University. We had over 80 staff members participate. Every single school sent a team. And what we did was we talked about our draft strategic plan and shared the goals and the commitments that the community has access to put as priorities, as well as it was an opportunity for them to look at their data and talk about how their school improvement plans are going to align with our district's strategic plan. It was 8:30 to 3:30 for two days, but it was a fun feel, but serious as well. And we have heard a lot of positive feedback, but just very thankful to all of the educators who, even though it is summertime, gave their time to really think about how we're going to best service students for the upcoming school year. So I just want to give a shout-out to all of those educators and our teaching and learning team for putting that Leadership Institute together. And then, lastly, you know, it is summertime, so it's time for us to wind down. But at the same time, there's still some summer work to do. What you will not see on the agenda today, which you did see at the last study session, was approval for the board policies. And the reason that we are not asking for approval on the board policies is because, contractually, we allow the BEA to look over the policies prior to approval. And because there is so many policies that they're looking at, we wanted to make sure that they had ample time to really look at all of those policies before bringing them back to the board for approval. So that is part of the summer work that we'll be working with our education association in looking at those policies and then start working on developing those administrative guidelines. And the other thing that we're continuing to focus on is looking at safety and security and meeting with our local municipalities to make sure that we are ready and prepared, again, to open school up in a safe manner. So that's part of our summer work.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Trustees, we now have board comments and requests. I just want to start us off with saying congratulations to all of our graduates from Groves and Seehome. Last, not this past Sunday, but the Sunday before, we celebrated down at the Aretha Franklin Amphitheater such a lovely ceremony, a beautiful tradition, celebrating our students, their graduation, their accomplishments. And I think it was a perfect ending to their school year. Any others, trustees?
I just have one update. We did vote on candidates for the Oakland Schools Board of Education at our last monthly meeting. And that election was held on the 6th of June. I was there for it. And the candidate who won that election, one incumbent, Connie Williams, and somebody who is going to be taking the seat newly, his name was Steve Gottlieb from the Troy District. So they will be our new Board of Education reps for Oakland schools.
Trustees, anyone else? Okay.
No, I just wanted to say something real quick just to...
Of course.
This meeting just happens to be between two major holidays. We just celebrated one, and we're about to celebrate one. So just want to recognize the Juneteenth holiday that we just celebrated for the first time, the legal holiday. And of course, the Independence Day that's coming soon. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have public comments. And I'm just going to quickly go over public comment card. Because the Birmingham Board of Education values public meetings, not just meetings in public, we welcome public comments on school issues. Most comments can be concisely stated in three minutes, and the board respectfully asks that comments remain focused on the topic or issue and not on specific personnel. We welcome your comments, but cannot discuss nor debate items not on the agenda. When asked to discuss non-agenda items, we can share facts, but not engage in discussion. We need to follow laws regarding public notice on issues and be aware that our community members may have an interest in the topic, but without proper notice, may not be present to contribute. So with that, our first public comment speaker is Bob Saad. Please come on up to the podium, sir.
Thanks so much. Thank you for your voluntary service, Board of Education. To the BPS community, this is Bob Saad. And I have one topic for your discussion today. And everybody has a copy, so you don't have to take notes. And they gave a copy to April as well. As you know, the administration has decided to pilot both iReady and LearnZillion math programs starting in the fall. And it's no secret I'm not particularly happy about that for particular reasons. And I'm hoping that some parents watch these videos. Okay, so I guess for a second, let me talk to the parents. These curriculum are replete with non-math baggage. These added non-math inclusions into math class will drown conscientious teachers that try to follow the intent of either curricula's teacher's manuals, which I've read. The increase of time spent on non-math content invariably means that there will be less time spent on math content to the detriment of the students. And then four, it's apparent that the social, emotional, learning-infused curricula and initiatives are now the de facto avenue for religious indoctrination in the district. And I hope parents heard those four points. This should have been enough to dissuade the administration and the board from going in this direction. But, you know, here we are. That said, since you're going forward with it, I'm going to ask you one thing, and it's the same thing I asked several years ago when we had CPM, Integrated Math. Would you set the standard? Would you set the exact statistical protocols and metrics that you're going to use to assess the program now? Not in December, not after you get the data. Just in a spirit of transparency, would you just do that right now? Tell us what tests you're going to use, what statistical measures you're going to use, so that when January comes and we have the data, that we can say, okay, this is the way it went. And then I'm going to ask you one other thing. I talked to the previous administration, and you are all in copy, and mostly on the board are in copy of this. I'm asking for a paired t-test, okay? Not a chi-square test. And the reason that is is because when parents ask, they ask the question, "Did my kid do better with the old curriculum or did my kid do better with the new curriculum?" And a paired t-test addresses that question. The chi-square test that we use for integrated math does not address that question. It addresses categories, like, "How many kids got As? How many kids got Bs?" But it doesn't say, "On average, did kids do better from the previous to the new?" That's important. That's important because with integrated math, there were extra As, but there are far more Ds and Es. And so, thank you. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Mr. Saad. Thank you very much. Our next public comment speaker is Mr. Dave Mott. Come on up, please.
Good evening. My name is David Mott. I've lived in the district for 27 years and have six kids, all of whom have attended Birmingham Public Schools. The oldest are starting their junior year at the University of Notre Dame and the United States Military Academy at West Point. To this point, my family has been very happy with Birmingham Public Schools. They've got a great education. Their lecturers are very well-prepared. And they've had some outstanding teachers. But now, after the equivalent of 52 Mott years in Birmingham Public School, we're pulling our triplet boys out of Covington and sending them to private school. We're saying goodbye with our feet. Why and how did it come to this? Well, I can tell you it's not COVID. And I'm sure you've heard plenty of complaints from people over the years about how the district has managed COVID, yada, yada, yah. I'm not one of those parents. In fact, I'll give you kudos. I have a daughter who's in her senior year at Marion. Marion handled COVID the same way Covington did. So there's no distinction with no difference. No, we're leaving because, simply stated, the leadership at Covington School and this administration failed to make a reasonable accommodation for my son in protecting his privacy and modesty while using the boys' locker room. Instead, they chose to ignore his rights and bias their decisions against him and went to protect those of a transgender student using the boys' locker room. I visited the school. I met with the principal, the vice-principal, April, and tried to come to a reasonable view where both students could share the locker room. My suggestions were, well, I would say, slow-walked for a week, nothing, no information, but then simply rejected. And so we leave because we have no choice. Three more students, Ms. Roberson, gone from the budget, gone from the district. Trustees, you have a crisis, not financial. You have a crisis of confidence. People are leaving.
Thank you, Mr. Mott. Thank you for sharing. Next, we have our general consent agenda. Trustees, can I get a motion to move forward our general consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Motion by Trustee Hokumar, seconded by Trustee Whitman. So on the consent agenda, we have the personnel reports, we have financial statements, we've gotten the minutes from the May 24 regular meeting, minutes from the June 7 study session, and then we have two resolutions. They are Resolutions 101, 101, which is the Membership in Michigan High School Athletic Association, and Resolution 102 to accept consent agenda items. Trustees, we can open it up to conversation, questions, comments?
I'd just like to point out that now, part of our consent agenda is the financial state... I'd just like to point out that now part of our consent agenda is the financial statements. We'll be looking at them every month with the most recent
Statement.
Numbers. Maria, thank you for including that
Yes.
in our packet.
And for making it consistent, you know, each month. Trustees, anything else? Okay.
Yeah, I just think we should, you know, acknowledge that this is one of the first personnel actions that reflects some of the difficult decisions that we've had to make with respect to the finances of our budget. You know, and includes a two-page table of resignations and terminations, which are about 50/50 between layoffs and resignations. And I just wouldn't want that those difficult decisions to go unnoticed or unrecognized in the work that central leadership did to make those decisions and in the losses that reflects for people and their families and for students and what would have been their teachers or what has been their teachers, so.
And relative to that, I do have one question. Dean, is this everybody, is everybody who has retired, resigned or been part of the layoffs on this report?
Oh, yes, I believe this includes everybody. There is some adjustments that happened within, you know, movement with staff. For example, there was specifically 27 layoffs. You'll see 25 on there between the time that we notified employees, teachers of layoffs. There was some additional resignations that we were able to recall to people before they even made it to the board report, so.
Okay.
But everybody should be represented on here as this is the last board report for the school year. So everybody who has resigned, retired is on here unless something came after, which occasionally we may very well get a resignation during the summer for someone who just not, doesn't plan on returning and maybe they resign or retire at the end of the summer here. So those would still show and be represented that they were from last school year since they're not going to be on the payroll for the following school year.
Okay, thank you. Trustees, all those in favor of moving the consent agenda
Approving.
Oh, sorry. All those of approving, in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Joan, please note that pass is 6-0. Next, we have our Specialized Instruction and Student Services Resolution Number 103, the Appointment of Representatives to the Special Ed Parent Advisory Committee, or otherwise known as PAC.
Good evening.
Laura, would you like to tee us up? Great.
Yes, good evening. According to the Michigan Special Education Rules, each intermediate school district must have a special education PAC or Parent Advisory Committee. The committee is comprised of representatives from local districts that serve a three-year term with terms staggered to assure that a majority of experienced members remain on the committee. The ISD is also required to ensure appropriate representation from all disability categories. The representatives must be approved by the local school district's Board of Education. Before we make a motion, I'd like to thank our two outgoing parents for their years of service. Mrs. Stacy Macris and Mrs. Jennifer Hannawalt have served as our parent advisory committee, Birmingham's, and they have served us very, very well in their work with the Oakland Intermediate School District PAC Committee. So at this time, I'd like to, do you want me to read this or do you want to read this?
Go right ahead.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to move that Mrs. Amber Baum and Mr. Greg Butera be appointed as parent representatives to serve on the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee at the Oakland Intermediate School District.
Trustees, can I get a motion to consider Resolution 103?
I move to consider Resolution 103, Appointment of Representatives to the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee.
Second that motion.
The motion was moved by Trustee Young, seconded by Trustee Joseph. Trustees, any questions or comments? All those in favor of passing Resolution 103, the Appointment of Representatives to the Special Ed Parent Advisory Committee, otherwise known as PAC, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Please note that pass is 6-0. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now we are moving to our Teaching and Learning section. Our presentation with April Imperial, we have the Assessment Pilot Update and we have two resolutions, Resolution 104, Awarding of Diplomas to Groves High School and the Awarding of Diplomas to Seahomme High Schools.
Wonderful. Good afternoon, or evening. I'm still going from today. I am here tonight to give you an update on our assessment pilot. With me is Caitlin Phillips. She is a Curriculum Coordinator for K-12 Assessment and College Career Readiness and Bill Q, who is a Curriculum Coordinator for 612 ELA and Social Studies. And they have been the partners with me in leading our assessment pilot work and they're going to be sharing a little bit of our update this evening. On April, in the April study session on April 5, we shared with the Board our assessment pilot that had started. At that time, we had made it through Phase 1 of this work. And that phase, just to review, is where we gather data, we identify assessment best practices, we review state and national standards, we consider what are our goals as a district, we conduct some data analysis, talk to people to see where we're at as a district. In Phase 2 is where we actually began the pilot, which started in January of this year and ran through to June. So we were in that phase when we met earlier. And now we have moved through Phase 2, having conducted an assessment review committee, having gone to the Curriculum Council, and we are ready to share with you the results of that review and our recommendation, which will come to the Board for a resolution in July. So at this time, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go over the phases with the timeline real quick. So should we move forward with this? In May to August, we'll be thinking about our beginning year assessment. We'll be preparing teachers with professional development. We have had pilot teachers all year and so those teachers have already had professional learning and have continued to grow in their expertise and will be assisting us in that, in that journey of professional learning. September would start our implementation year and that's where we begin our beginning of the year administration. Between our beginning of year and mid-year assessment, so these are our benchmark assessments, which I'll note quickly, are required by Michigan State law, although we have options in which assessments we use. Administering the assessment is a part of Michigan State law for beginning and end of year or twice a year. Between beginning of year and mid-year, we would work on, with our teachers, on analyzing that data and developing instructional plans to support students with both intervention and enrichment for students that are on above and a little below grade level or needing a little extra scaffolding and support. And then after that mid-year assessment, we would do the same work in between, moving into end of year. At that time, we'd recalibrate our assessments. We'd look to see which students, our interventions, our plans. We'd look to see which students had made enough progress to go back to tier one instruction and not need any support. And we'd look to see if there are any other students that we need to think about. And then that would bring us to, hopefully, celebrating our improved student achievement outcomes at the end of 2023 and then we would start the cycle over again with year two. So now I'm going to pass it over to Caitlin and she's going to talk to you about the evaluation tool we used with the Assessment Review Committee.
So to evaluate our existing assessment, which is NWEA MAP Growth, as well as our piloted assessment, which was iReady, we used a objective as well as comprehensive evaluation tool. It was inclusive of language from the criteria for procuring and evaluating high-quality assessments as well as the Strategy Implementation Guide and the BPS Assessment Framework and input from our stakeholders. The tool comprised of five criteria. The first was the assessment being able to yield valuable reports on student progress as well as their performance. Parts B and C of the tool talked about alignment to the standards, English Language Arts as well as math. Part D talked about the fit for the district, how the tool met our needs as well as the overall assessment goals and the technical quality of the assessment platform. Here is an example of Part A. Again, that's the yield valuable reports on student progress and performance portion of the tool. You see the criteria listed as well as evidence and then we asked the committee to give a rating, one being it did not meet the standards, two meaning it partially met the standards and three meaning it exceeded. So when we went around to review the assessment platforms and using our tool, first we engaged in shared learning around the criteria, which included a deeper dive of the school itself. Then we offered support in norming the criteria through the assessment platform resources such as the linking studies provided by both NWEA as well as iReady. Then we also had presentations from both vendors. Our teams were grouped in mixed grade level. For whole group as well as small group discussion was embedded throughout our process. And there is a quote from one of our lovely BPS teachers saying the tool was thorough and the criteria and evidence listed made scoring simple. Next, Bill is going to take us through our educator labor review.
Thanks, Caitlin. So the resource that Caitlin just reviewed with you was the key resource that we used through our process to make a decision and a recommendation as to which assessment tool we would like to recommend. To do that, first of all, to let you know that educators were highly involved in the entire process, we had 42 teachers across the district in grades K through 8 that participated as pilot teachers this year, meaning that only did they give the NWA assessment, they also administered the pilot iReady assessment. We had teachers at every school, K through 8, participate in the pilot. And in addition to that, we had principals that participated as administrators of their school and we also had our testing coordinators, made up of our instructional specialists and reading specialists, also participate. The committee that used the evaluation tool is called our Assessment Review Committee. So at the end of the process, at the end of the pilot, we asked for representation and we found representation across every building that participated in the pilot, which is every school, K through 8. We, on our committee, we had 17 members, nine instructional or reading specialists, those testing coordinators. We had eight teachers who participated in the pilot as well as some non-voting members. Some of us facilitated the session, some of us acted as table coaches and April was there as well. The key responsibility of this Assessment Review Committee was number one, to review the platforms that we have, the NWA platform and the iReady platform using that evaluation tool. We also evaluated the pilot outcomes. And so we analyzed both qualitative data from many surveys that I'll talk about in just a second as well as the quantitative data collected during the pilot. And then ultimately, based on our evaluation and our score on those five criteria across the rubric, we made a recommendation and final selection to you and to the superintendent as to which assessment tool we think would best fit the district. We want to highlight a little bit about how we involve stakeholders from across our community throughout this pilot process. Our first move was to provide informational sessions for our school leaders. So our principals, district leaders had an opportunity to learn all about both assessment tools, the NWEA, if they had any questions, we've been using that tool for a long time in the district, as well as the iReady assessment. So that principals could be knowledgeable and go back to their building and share that information with staff. We also conducted some parent engagement sessions. As data came in from the different assessments, we were able to go over those reports and some of the data with members of the community. We also conducted staff and family surveys throughout the process. We even had some focus groups that included families, a focus group of students and multiple focus groups of teachers that were in the pilot and that were not in the pilot. And of course, our assessment committee also participated to give us feedback in the process. Just another graphic way to represent the engagement of teachers through their committee, serving on the committee through their surveys, through the focus groups, administrators through committees and informational sessions that we held, parents in the community, again through surveys, engagement sessions and focus groups, students with focus groups, all as important and key stakeholders. Ultimately, the committee, using the rubric and the criteria that Caitlin mentioned, scored a 20, the iReady assessment had a superior score, 26.3 out of 30 points across those five criteria and therefore became kind of the unanimous recommendation from all members of the committee. All right, April?
Before I dig into implementation integrity, I will share that we then took the recommendation of the Assessment Review Committee to our District Curriculum Council, who unanimously agreed with us moving forward with this recommendation. So I'll dig a little bit into implementation integrity because I think it's very important anytime you're thinking about a new initiative or a shift in what you're using with students, it's important to think deeply and be well-prepared for, in this case, we have several groups to make sure that we would be prepared for the shift. First, district leaders, because we do a lot of district data analysis and we want to make sure that all of our district leaders are trained and understand how to use the new platform. Second, we would be thinking about school leaders in our implementation integrity to make sure that the shift is something that they can lead in their district and that would include instructional specialists, our principals, and I would also include the teacher leaders who were involved in the pilot in that school leadership group that will be getting advanced preparation to make sure we're ready for beginning of year assessment. And then obviously, we'd be worried, we would be addressing the needs of teachers and ensuring that they're prepared as well as our students and our families as they would be receiving information and data that looks a little different in some ways similar to what they have received in the past. So our, our plan for implementation integrity is multifaceted. I do want to name that one of the reasons that as a district we are making this recommendation is that we are continually doing an assessment analysis. One of the first activities that Caitlin engaged in when she joined our team was to analyze the assessments across the district to look for duplications and opportunity to reduce the number of assessments but keep the quality of data we need to make strong instructional decisions. iReady is an assessment tool that is both norm reference and criterion reference. So that means it shows us how we're doing compared to like students nationally, but it also tells us how our students and how our district is doing compared to the grade level standards. So how are our students progressing in mastery of grade level standards? Both pieces of information are extremely valuable, but because it is also criterion reference, you can see the display as a graphic of our comprehensive and balanced assessment system. And iReady can actually serve the role as a universal screener. It could also serve the role as a dyslexia screener. So it would replace our phonemic awareness assessment with the, an assessment that I think many who wanted that assessment would be a little bit happier with, which is a dyslexia screener. It's a diagnostic assessment, which means it tells us which of our students are at risk. It can also be used for progress monitoring throughout the year, both big progress monitoring that we're used to and mini, so little, small, in between our benchmark assessments. It's an interim assessment and because it is, there is a linking study to our M-step, it also can serve as a summative, as a predictor of summative and state assessments. So in order to prepare for this, we are thinking deeply about our targeted professional learning for classrooms. Our learning will begin in August of 2022. Our learning will begin in August of 2022. It actually has already begun, because we have had so many teachers officially participate in the pilot and unofficially. It's, word got out, people liked it, so people started trying to figure out how they could take use of some of the resources. But all of our pilot teachers have had training, so it actually has already started throughout this year, but it would begin in August of 2020. And we would also be thinking about opportunities for parents to learn about the assessment and the resources that they may see coming home that are a part of this assessment suite. We, of course, will be doing initial professional learning, which will really focus on how to administer the assessment with, you know, to ensure we have clean, good data. And then after that initial assessment, we'll dig deeply into what the reports tell us about our students and what instructional resources are available for both enrichment and support. And we're going to do that through onsite coaching with our instructional specialists, our pilot teachers, and also some support from the vendor and my team as well, because we're all being trained. Leaders will begin getting, be trained in August as well, and they actually participate in the onsite coaching they did this year as a part of our pilot, and they will continue that practice. And we are going to have family engagement evenings. So family engagement evenings where, before we put out the first report, you know how we send the reports home to parents? We're going to have the opportunities for parents to come in to learn about the report directly from us. We did that during the pilot, and we think that that's very helpful in helping people understand any differences and being able to ask questions as they need to better understand their students' results. Just, just one last comment before I go to questions, which is, we will also be thinking about, you know, job-embedded professional learning. So iReady is an assessment suite that comes with resources to support instruction. So for example, if you're a fifth-grade teacher and you have a student functioning at sixth-grade mathematics, and you're thinking about doing an extension or enrichment activities, oftentimes you have to go search for materials, because you have a set of fifth-grade instructional materials, and if they don't have quality differentiation or enrichment, you have to go on a search to find materials. And oftentimes, that's challenging. With this suite, our teachers would have access to parallel activities that are aligned with the sixth-grade standards. So we could begin to provide that enrichment to our students that are seeking that more challenging experience, I would say. And the same is true in the other direction. And so, you know, we intend to provide professional learning and support so that these resources can be used alongside the assessment itself.
Ms. Imperial, thank you so much for this update. This is very helpful. I just wanted to point out, trustees and for the community, that we will be voting on this as a resolution on our July 19 meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Which means that we have a full month in order to dive into this, talk to the, the Assessment Review Committees and the Pilot Participation Committee members, and really ask April, reach out to April if you have any other questions or things that you have a concern. So we do have homework to do on this, and we will come back prepared by July 19. So now I'm opening it up to any questions, trustees, that you have right now. I actually have one, and I don't know if you said this in our study session, but perhaps it's just good for everyone to know. So when we did NWEA, we added a third testing window date in a school year. Would we be looking at adding a third one with iReady as well?
We would likely continue the practice of three benchmark assessments.
We would, you said?
We would likely.
Okay.
Primarily because the mid-year checkpoint allows us, allows us to course-correct if needed. It also allows us to understand where students are at. When we do interventions or enrichment with students, we progress monitor along the way, which is telling us, oh, so in reading, for example, if you're doing a fluency intervention, it tells us, the progress monitoring tells me the student's rate of reading words is improving, so they can read words a bit more fluently. But in order to understand if that intervention has had an impact on the student's reading ability, I need an assessment like iReady or NWA that gives you an overall understanding of what is their reading level. Reading is very multifaceted. And so that mid-year checkpoint this year allowed us to notice some areas in our data that were of concern, and we were able to rally our principals and our instructional specialists and our reading specialists together to develop plans and respond. So I think we would likely continue three assessments, at least until we begin to see our data begin to move towards our goals.
So do you, is iReady, I mean, NWA was quite lengthy. Is iReady similar setup to that? Because, and the reason I ask is, you know, I do worry about testing fatigue.
I agree with you. iReady does appear initially to take a little less time than, than NWEA. The problem is with adaptive diagnostics, you do have to ask enough questions to get where the student is at across that K-12 continuum. The way that iReady does help us with testing fatigue is often, we're giving that assessment, and then we're following it up in reading with three additional assessments that the teacher's giving. So because iReady is norm reference and gives us data in core areas like phonological awareness, phonics, comprehension, vocabulary, we are not going to have to do all those additional assessments that take a tremendous amount of instructional time away after NWEA, especially in grades K-5.
Thank you.
Laurie, thank you for asking, because I too worry about testing fatigue with all of our, especially middle school as well.
A question. So our new strategic plan has several data-based goals.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm curious as to if you think there's going to be any difficulty using comparison data when we move between NWEA and iReady, and how that will affect, you know, looking at our strategic plan? Because this year, it's sort of like our jumping-off point, and our data will be NWEA-based.
Yes, well, what we plan to do if we move to iReady is to revise our strategic plan goals that are aligned with NWEA to be aligned with iReady. We can do that, because they are both norm-reference tests, and they both name that on-grade level is at the 60th percentile rank. So it would be relatively, relatively simple for us to adjust those goals to align to iReady. The one thing that we would have to pay very close attention to is, is there a significant difference in the percent of students on-grade level with iReady as compared to NWEA? One of the things that our teachers have noticed is that it is a bit more rigorous. iReady was built out of the Common Core standards. It was not tweaked to match the Common Core standards, the way pre-existing assessments were. And so we may see a little bit of a difference in the percent on-grade level, and we would need to adjust the goals for that. But because this is our first year of strategic plan, we could do that at the very beginning of the year, and then we could still measure our success at the end of the year, as we plan to do. It's one of the reasons why we are moving forward with this recommendation, is we would never change in the middle of the strategic plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Trustees, any other comments or questions for April? Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Imperial.
Thank you very much.
Okay. We're now going to move on.
Oh, I'm still here.
To resolution, yeah, you're going to stay right there. Resolution 104, which is the awarding of the diplomas to Groves High School. Trustees, can I get a motion to consider resolution 104?
I move that we approve resolution 104, the awarding of diplomas to Groves High School.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Holcomer, seconded by Trustee Rath. Trustees, anyone want to say anything? Lovely ceremony, great venue, kids were so happy and excited. So all those in favor of awarding our students diplomas by passing resolution 104 to Groves High School, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, Joan passes 6-0. Next, we have resolution 105. This is awarding of diplomas to Seehom High School students. Can I get a motion, please, trustees?
I would like to move forward to approve resolution 105, awarding diplomas for Seehom High School students.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Joseph, seconded by Trustee Whitmer. Trustees, any comments or questions? All those in favor of awarding our Seehom graduates diplomas and passing resolution 105, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Passes again unanimously. Looks like they're all moving on. Congratulations to our graduates. Thank you so much, Ms. Imperial.
Thank you very much.
The next part of our agenda is our business services. We have four, five resolutions. Resolution 106, which is the approval of the final budget for 2021-2022 school year. Resolution 107, which is the approval of our projected budget for the 2022-2023 school year. We have resolution 108, which is the Groves High School auxiliary gym. Resolution 109, which is the Bingham Farms Elementary Playground and Hardscape, and resolution 110, which is the West Maple Playground Equipment, and resolution 111 to renew the contract for food service management. Maria, did you need to tee anything up, or are we just going to go ahead and move forward with our resolutions? I just want to note, for the sake of the community, that during our study sessions, we had a very comprehensive presentation by Dr. Gisinger. The presentation has been, was it posted on our website, the, what was it on our, just the PowerPoint? The document. Posted on our website, if anyone has any comments or questions. So trustees, can I get a motion to move resolution 106, the approval of our final budget for the school year 2021-2022?
I move that we approve the 21-22 general appropriations budget, resolution number 106.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Holcomer, seconded by Trustee Whitman. Any comments or questions, trustees?
Yeah, I think it's just worth clarifying to the community, so the amount that was spoken about a lot was $14 million. And so can, can we just get a basic explanation of where we're at in this final budget and how we got there?
Dr. Gisinger?
Well, I believe this budget is not the one with $14 million.
Is what?
But she's saying with.
Did you hear what Trustee Young, okay.
So to bridge the gap between our projected revenues and our projected expenditures, we used some fund balance from our ASD budget that had been in that fund, and so able to be utilized and transferred back to the general fund. That was about $4 million. We also relied very heavily on one-time funding of our ESSR 11T funding, it was about $6 million. And then our original projection was if every dime in the budget had been spent. And so there were some, a little bit of belt-tightening and some conservative spending as the fiscal year wound down, so we were able to garner some savings there to end up with significantly less than $14 million of a hit to our fund balance, and that is the reason why we are not showing that $14 million difference.
And the, because so many of those amounts to plug in holes were one-time amounts, when you address the next resolution, you'll be able to explain why structural changes had to be made to make up for some of that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustees, any other comments or questions?
No, just for anybody watching, I just would like to point out, we did have a very lengthy discussion about both the 2021 final budget, 21-22 final budget, and the budget for next year at our last study session.
As well as the Finance Committee meeting and going over everything as well. I mean, that was quite time-consuming and a deep dive, and I think it's important that the community realize how much it took us to get to this point. And Dr. Gisinger, we cannot thank you enough, countless hours dedicated to this, and we appreciate everything you've done. Okay, trustees, all those in passing resolution 106 to approve our final budget for the 2021-2022 school year, please raise your hand and say yea or nay.
Aye.
Aye. 6-0, resolution 106 passes. Next, we have resolution 107. This is the approval of our projected budget. This is the upcoming school year 2022-2023. Trustees, can I get a motion to consider resolution 107?
I move to consider resolution 107, the 2022-2023 proposed budget.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Young, seconded by Trustee Whitman. All trustees, any questions or comments? Dr. Gisinger is right up front, ready for questions or?
Well, I mean, to continue with Adrian's prior comment, this is not a balanced budget. We are still projecting a deficit of $3.4 million. So, Dr. Gisinger, maybe you could sort of walk us through how we got to this point and the work that's ahead of us for next year.
Sure. So this is an extremely conservative projected budget. We didn't want to find ourselves in the same boat next year as we found ourselves in this year. We are anticipating a $300 per people increase. I was hoping by now that the state budget would be resolved, but it is still undetermined. We are hearing numbers of $435 a student, and so we're expecting if that does occur, we'll have some additional state funding as well. We set out on a very ambitious campaign to right-size our district and fit into our revenue stream for the 22-23 school year. We think we have trimmed as much as we possibly can in the 22-23 school year, and that's why we're presenting not quite a balanced budget, but about a $3.3 million reduction in our fund balance, which still leaves us with a very healthy fund balance of over 11%. Obviously, as a district, we can't continue to have an unbalanced budget, so we will continue to plan very thoughtfully and purposely as we move into the future about how we can continue to restructure our district so that we will have a balanced budget in the future.
I have a couple of questions. So one of the things you said was you think that you pulled back as much as you could for the 22-23 school year, but it's not a balanced budget. So what does that mean for planning in the future? And what, what makes it different to pull back more a year from now versus now? Can you talk to me a little bit about that?
Yeah, can I speak to that in terms of, I wouldn't say that we cut back as much as we could. I think we cut back as much as we could to, and ensuring that we're keeping all programming and making sure that, you know, we want to see how the cuts that we have, the adjustments that we have made for this year, how they play out for our students, because we want to make sure that our students still have the same type of Birmingham education. And so we, this was as much as we could and know that for sure that we are not in any way changing programming for our students. And so after we work through this year, we'll look again at our budget. We'll definitely know that, you know, each year we have some attrition that will occur, and we'll make adjustments there, and then we'll see if there are other areas in which we can make adjustments and still, again, provide that Birmingham education for students.
And?
And one of the areas we talked about making potential changes in at past meetings was in response to the security audit. And one of the things recommended was to adjust our contracts with the local police departments because they were in the security audit, audits view. Not to personify an audit, but I can't recall the guy's name who did it. But that, it was just wildly overpriced for the services that we were getting. And it wasn't in keeping with best practices for building community in that the schools should be able to select who's going to serve as their security officer. I also made it clear at that meeting that I don't actually want a police presence at all in our schools. So I'm curious whether this budget reflects any changes in that with respect to even the best practices. I, I feel like I was kind of on an island with, with the belief that there shouldn't be police at all in the school. But does the 2022, 2023 budget at least reflect best practices for security?
We have made some adjustments in that area related to the results of that safety audit that has occurred. For, for instance, we have budgeted extra supplies in the classrooms in the event of a tragic event that could occur in the district. So we're planning for that, to have those supplies in place. We are, we have not made any changes that I'm aware of to the police liaison contracts. I believe that is on the agenda for the 2223 school year.
So, and I can speak too. Since our last study session, Dr. Linnenberg and I met with both Birmingham and Beverly Hills Police Chiefs. We are really trying to work hard to come to an agreement that will allow us to have full-time service in our buildings. It doesn't change the budget amount, so, which is why I asked Dr. Gisinger to keep that online item in the budget for SROs, because we don't anticipate seeing a different budget amount in, in, in our line items. But what we anticipate is additional service, you know, for, for our students, both through Grathgroves and Seehom, but also through those feeder schools as well with those police liaisons.
And you anticipate that for the 2223 school year?
We, we are working hard to, to get that through. Our next step is to work with our city managers on this issue.
Okay. Thank you.
I've also placed at your spot a legal-sized piece of paper in response to some inquiries that I had when we had our study session. That legal-sized piece of paper is a snapshot of every fund that the district has. So you can see that it works from our general fund to our special revenue, capital projects, and our debt. It's essentially a shot of the entire budget book on one piece of paper. And so I was asked to present kind of the cheat sheet of what's happening in each fund. And so it's kind of a neat thing to look at if you're bored to kind of see what's happening in each fund the district is currently participating in.
And then what's the timeline on potential revenue generating projects? Like at what point in, you know, this is, this is part one of 2223. At three, at of innovation in terms of power generating revenue, whether that be, you've spoken about increasing enrollment in preschool, making all the early childhood, five days a week, things like that. When can we expect to see that reflected in an amendment? Or should we be looking at that for years down the road?
So a couple of things in terms of revenue generating or cost savings as well. We've been in ongoing conversations with transportation. This budget already reflects a half a million dollar reduction in transportation, but even as today, Dr. Linnenberg and his group has worked with transportation, our Durham Transportation, to talk more about how we can consolidate routes, to make some adjustments. That may be ongoing depending on our ridership in the 2223 school year. In terms of preschool and early childhood learning, what we're going to do is spend this year working on a plan for both preschool and transitional kindergarten, because we did not want to rush into having something available for the fall that wasn't high quality. And we know we have a program in Midville that is, is outstanding, but wanting to make sure that as we, it's, you know, expand that early childhood program, you know, are we looking at one center where we're going to have all early childhood together? Or are we going to continue to have this in our neighborhood schools? Those are conversations that we need to have in order to expand our preschool program and make sure that we're pulling in some of those students in the long run. We have a couple of other costs, revenue, I mean, some revenue generating ideas that we're trying to work through. We're hoping that, you know, and this is something that we shared in the study session, that instead of waiting to the mid-year to do an amendment, that we do an amendment after count. So one will know our enrollment, and that should be stable. But then also, if some other things have come to fruition, we would be able to, to make an amendment then at that point. What you see now for the 2223 school year, in some ways, we're hoping is kind of the worst case in terms of going into our fund equity. And we're hoping that, again, with the per pupil increase, we're hoping with enrollment and with some other revenue generating ideas, that you would see a amended budget that looks more to the positive.
And then with this being the worst-case scenario, is there any world in which, you know, while we were way off, we let too many people go? Or we're not talking about that big of a swing?
I don't think that we'll see that we, well, if we get an influx of enrollment.
Oh.
Then, yes, then we may have, you know, we'll call people back. And we've been monitoring our enrollment quite frequently. The principals are giving numbers. So in addition to looking at our Power School principals also, because they're in touch with families, they hear about families who are moving out or coming in. And so we have both, what you see is a projected staff ratio that I know that Dean Nefor has shared with you. But then we also have the actual staff ratio that's in Power School. And so we're monitoring both of those numbers or both those documents to determine, you know, whether or not we're still on track in terms of the numbers, staff that we have, or if we're going to need to call many staff members back.
And we won't know that until October of 2022 with our first student count.
Well, we'll, in October, we'll know in terms of stability and what we're getting the funds for. But we'll be monitoring over the summer. So for instance, if we see either a mass exodus or a large influx over the summer, we're going to make adjustments, you know, in the, in real time to, to react and respond to what we're seeing at our schools.
Well, and I'd just like to point out that, Dean, thank you for providing the staffing ratios. So the estimates for 2022, 23 are actually very similar now to what we, our staffing ratios from 2019, 20. So I know I've heard concerns from parents about large class sizes, and, you know, these are not overly large. You know, certainly at the high school level, larger than elementary, but that's as it should be. So I think this is something that we, as trustees, need to be looking at on a continual basis so that we can adjust, as Adrian said, in case we do see a rise in enrollment.
One thing that I always try to bring up as much as I can is we provide a service. Our service is education, and that's our product. So we need to do whatever it takes to make people know and aware of why they need to pick Birmingham School District. We need to be the people who, if humanly possible, if possible, call every parent and meet with as many parents as possible and address their concerns, whether in a group or in an individual basis. If we don't do those things, I don't know how many more students we will lose, because there is a reason why Pepsi, Cola, and Coca-Cola and other companies spend millions and millions of dollars in advertising their product when already people know what they do and what they sell. So that's all what I have to say. Thank you.
Trustees, any other comments or questions?
Is this available to the public too, the staffing ratio sheet?
I don't, I don't believe it was part of the package. Was it?
The only reason I ask is because the numbers really don't change that much at all. Some even get smaller. And so, you know, I, I think your summary is, is fair, Trustee Holcomer, but, you know, some, like, this really isn't a big change at all. I just want to emphasize that.
We can post a summary.
Yeah, we can post this. Great.
Thank you.
And I don't want to undersell, I mean, one student can be a big change for a teacher who's effectively differentiating. I'm not trying to say that. I'm just trying to say in terms of parents' fears, fearing the worst, I think that this could do a lot to assuage some of those fears.
Trustees, any other comments or questions? Then all those in favor of passing Resolution 107, which is the approval of the projected budget for the 2022, 2023 school year, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Joan, note that passes 6-0. The next four resolutions, again, these have been discussed quite at length with our study sessions. And they are Resolution 108 for the Groves High School Auxiliary Gym. And I'd like to ask trustees if I can get a motion to consider moving trustee, Resolution 108 forward.
I move to consider Resolution 108, bid pack 211 for Groves High School Auxiliary Gym.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Young, seconded by Trustee Whitman. Trustees, any questions, any certifications that we need to bring forward to the community that we discussed at study session? This is part of our bond project. I just want to remind you.
Right, I was just going to say that, just to remind the public that this is part of the bond, it's not our general fund. It's already been sitting there, waiting for this to happen. And because the prices keep going up, it's for our advantage to do it now versus later.
Before, before it gets to the study session even, these projects, these resolution, or before they, they become resolutions, are discussed and presented at the bond committees. And then the bond committee moves them forward to the study session, which they're discussed, where we look at, in quite length, the detail of everything involved. And then it becomes the resolution on the general board meeting. So we've had quite a number of opportunities to look at these, to study, to ask questions. So trustees, do we have anything else to discuss on Resolution 108? Okay, all those in favor of moving 108 forward, passing it, the Groves High School Auxiliary Gym, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Passes 6-0. Next resolution is, again, what we just studied at bond committee study session, and it's here today's resolution, is Resolution 109, Bingham Farms Elementary Playground and Hardscape. Trustees, can I get a motion to move Resolution 109 forward?
I move to consider Resolution 109 for the Bingham Farms Elementary Playground and Hardscape.
You just want to write on that whirly new equipment that was coming up, Trustee Young?
That's absolutely right.
I, I knew. I wish, yeah, we did, we, I wish we did have pictures. I think actually Bingham Farms has quite a bunch of pictures in their, in their foyer area. But motion was moved by Trustee Young and seconded by?
Second.
Trustee Brass. Opened it up to comments and questions? What was it called, the Whirly Twirly?
Well, I do think it should be a requirement for the trustees to test this equipment.
Any comments, questions? All those in favor of passing Resolution 109, Bingham Farms Elementary Playground and Hardscape, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Note, Joan, it passes 6-0, which brings us to our next playground equipment. This is at West Maple now, Resolution 110. Trustees, can I get a motion to consider Resolution 110?
I move Resolution 110, the purchase and replacement of playground equipment at West Maple funded by West Maple's SE budget through the 2020 bond.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Brass, seconded by Trustee, again, Young, looking at the equipment, and Trustee Holcomer. Trustees, any comments or questions?
I just want to say it says courses appropriate for ages 5 to adult.
Yeah.
Yes.
I know.
I'm just saying.
I mean, worst-case scenario, we can all go there and have lunch.
You were going to point that out.
Yeah.
You and Luke can go test them out and report back to us.
That's fine.
Trustees, any other comments or questions? Now we know the age limit. There is no age limit, I guess. All those in favor of moving or passing Resolution 110, the West Maple Playground Equipment, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Joan, please note it passes 7-0. And the last one of these resolutions for the business service reports is Resolution 111, which is a renewal contract for food service management, which is our Chartwells. And I do just want to add, before we move this resolution forward, that Chartwells, through a special grant awarded Derby and Groves a budget to update and totally revamp their cafeterias to like this professional food court, you know, status that looks so high-tech and so good that, I swear, we'll be having lunch there ourselves. I know the kids will be so excited. And I was very, very proud that Holly and Patty chose those schools and chose Birmingham to award this fund. And I just wanted to, not that I'm putting in a plug that this is going to renew the contract, but it certainly did help. So can I get a motion to move, to consider Resolution 111, the renewal contract?
I move to consider Resolution 111, the renewal contract for school food service management, public bid package 2.1819.
I second that motion.
Moved by Trustee Holcomer, seconded by Trustee Joseph. We now open up to comments and questions?
Yeah, I just have a quick comment, honestly. Just based on what my kids tell me, they just have really a lot of good variety of food, honestly, and healthy and not so healthy, I guess. But, but it's important to have a variety of both. And they, they work with you if you have allergies and stuff like that. I mean, they're just amazing. I think they're wonderful. And I'm so happy to have that, to have them coming back. So thank you to them.
Yeah, I would also give Chartwells kudos for the way they've handled the food service throughout this pandemic, because I don't know if adults realize this, but initially, they were limited in what they could cook. And so a lot of the food that the kids, you know, I'll just say the chicken sandwich, because that's what my son always said he liked, they couldn't always, they couldn't provide it. And so, you know, Patty and Holly did such a great job of trying to come up with alternatives so that the kids were still, you know, enjoying their meals. And, I mean, I know this year was way better, but again, I think they do a fabulous job.
Yes.
And, and I also remember it was, I believe, this number is accurate, about 500 meals a day were made available to families during the pandemic by Chartwells. 500 meals a day, that's, that's a lot of work and, and great reach out. And it was all at, at no cost. So, trustees, any other comments or questions for Chartwells?
No, I agree, just I think they're a great partner, for sure.
All those in favor of passing Resolution 111 to renew the contract for food service management to Chartwells, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Passes six-zero. Now, we have Technology Services. This is Resolution 112, to award a contract for a bid package for our video surveillance change order. Oh, he's already... Look at you.
Thank you very much, Ford.
We're heading TS up, sir? We're ready.
Yep, this is just... We talked about this briefly at the study session. This is something that came out of our security audit. We noticed that there were some holes in our video surveillance system. So, me and my representative met with every principal at every school and went over their camera maps in detail to find every hole that we could cover with video surveillance. And we also took a look at the cameras planned for the new buildings that are going up, and reevaluated there to our new level of coverage for the rest of the district. So, we don't like to go into a lot of real details at public meetings of those just for the security of our buildings. But this reflects an additional set of cameras and some network servers that are required to store the video of those cameras. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Trustees, can I get a motion to consider moving Resolution 111, the renewal contract... Excuse me, the award contract for bid package for our video surveillance change order? And I meant 112. Did I say 112?
No, you said 111. It is 112.
I said, can I get a motion to consider?
No, no, I know, I don't know if you said 112 or 111.
That's what I just asked. Did I say 112 or 111? And I heard I said 112.
I moved to...
Did I not?
It doesn't matter.
Okay, I'm saying 112 right now, for the record. I'm making sure that I'm clear on moving Resolution 112.
To award the contract, bid package, T3, video surveillance change order.
Second.
And just to clarify one thing I forgot to mention, this is funded 100% out of the bonds, so there's no cost of the general fund.
Trustees, any comments or questions for...
Is this for just one building, or just curious for...
This is every building in the district is going to be touched by...
Oh, okay, okay. Just want to make sure, because it wasn't stated here.
I apologize for not making that clear. Yes, it is every building.
It's just good to know.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor of passing Resolution 112, the award contract for bid package for the video surveillance change order, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Note, Joan, that passes six-zero. So, now that takes us to any other reports that we have? I don't have any myself, trustees. Okay, we look at the calendar. We have got a study session coming up on the first Tuesday of July, and then on the third Tuesday...
We don't.
No, we don't.
Sorry, that's... Sorry, that's Fourth of July.
We have those study sessions on the July.
We just have our regular...
We just had the organizational meeting?
Yeah.
And that's July 19.
So, I have our July 12 for the community. At 8:30 a.m. will be our organizational meeting. So, at that point, we'll be voting on new executive board for the trustees. We'll be voting on the goals for the 2022/2023 year for the trustees, as well as we'll go through a number of other, what we call typical annual housekeeping-type votes. So, that again is July 12, 8:30 a.m.
Thank you so much for the clarification.
No, I just looked at the calendar. And then, Amy, I don't know if you want to talk about this Thursday, the Get On Board?
Oh, yes.
Again, for the community?
This Thursday, here, wait, no.
It's at Groves Media Center.
In the Groves Media Center. We will be hosting another Get On Board session. This is for anybody who might be interested in running for the board. You have plenty of time to decide. The filing deadline is July 24. But this presentation really just talks about the process of filing as well as what serving on a school board looks like. And then, there will be a number of trustees there to answer any questions that you might have about time commitments, protocols, committees, all that stuff.
So, again, that's this Thursday.
Yes, this Thursday.
The 23rd, 7 p.m. at the Groves Media Center.
And we had one other, and nobody came. So, honestly, if you're thinking of running, please come. We want to see you.
Yes, we do.
And you were saying the filing deadline's actually a little bit earlier than...
Yes, the filing deadline's July 26.
Oh, did I say the 24th?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, it's the 26th, you said?
It is.
Oh, so it's later, okay.
Sorry.
Trustees, anything else? For the good of the cause. Okay, it is 9:12, and I am going to call this meeting adjourned. Thank you so much, everybody, for coming.